Good afternoon. I would like to start the general review session of the meeting. We have ordinances on first reading. Ordinance 091 for one, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Everson Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Mid-Block Post-Work, this is in reference to regulation 3. We have ordinance 091 for two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 12, Street Sidebooks and Public Places, Parks and Playgrounds, and this is in reference to Brooklyn Park and the Brooklyn Park of Rovers School on Main Days. Ordinance 091 for three, it's an ordinance to amend the Management Salary Ordinance for 2012 through 2014.
Mr. President, we're just adding one management title to the existing ordinance. And I believe the title is, excuse me one second, Community Organization Specialist. It'll be a range 91 position. The salary range will be 36,000 to 66,000.
We have Resolutions 091 for 31 to approve again the amendments. We have Resolution 435, approve amendment 831 to 91214. Resolution 436, authorized refund for being taxed sales certificates. Resolution 437, approve amendment to Resolution 071 for 36, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 1,895,500 to Lawrence Gitterman of Police Officer Daniel Masan in the battle of Detroit, Chicago, State of versus the City of New Brunswick, from 5,855 to 7,701. Resolution 438, approve amendment of Resolution 071 for 35, the reason is paying additional legal fees in the amount of 1,350 to Lawrence Gitterman for Detective Christopher Bonheiner in the matter of Rodriguez versus New Brunswick, from 5,245 to 6,545. Resolution 439, approve amendment of Resolution 071434, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 748 to Benedict Alman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Victor Rodriguez versus the City of New Brunswick, from 1,901 to 2,652. Resolution 440, approve amendment of Resolution 061 for 41, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 620,50 to Benedict Alman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Stephen Hilton versus the City of New Brunswick, from 6,485 to 7,104. Resolution 441, authorized property for board of security, the location is 310,000 Street and the amount is 1,174,26. Resolution 442, authorized property for board of security, 310,000 Street, the amount is 1,0648. Resolution 443, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at Milos's County Administration Building for Earth Share New Jersey, and the date is December 9, 2014. Resolution 444, approve person-to-person transfer of license, license number 142-33-64-2005 from S.A.S. Inc., trading as Scarlet Cup, to Big Inn, 131 Eastern Avenue. Resolution 445, approve payment for emergency procurement water utility for the repair of a water main break on Jersey Avenue between Julian Street and Allen Street, installation of one insertion valve with CRJ Contracting Corporation, not to exceed 11,859. Resolution 446, authorized purchase by Fire Department of State Contract 8-83909 for water on our solutions unit for 14 portable radios and access service, not to exceed Resolution 447, approve order contract with gold type business machine, moving business as GTPM, for the renewal of proprietary software for the Police Department, 15 ETS and 15 Unco-Cop licenses. The term is 12 months, commencing on August 1, 2014 and ending July 31, 2014, not to exceed 9,944, and this is nonfrontal. Resolution 448, approve order contract with Language Line Services, this is for translation services for the Police Department. It's a 12-months contract commencing on September 18, 2014 and ending on September 17, 2015, not to exceed $12,000. Resolution 449, approve order contract with State Book Contract and Commercial Inn for printing and writing of various forms of the useful work. The term is 12 months, commencing on September 18, 2014 and ending on September 17, 2015, not to exceed 24,644. Resolution 450, approve order contract with Partners Electronics Inc., doing business side partners, communication and electronics, for regular maintenance for the Police Department. The term is a three-year period, commencing on September 18, 2014 and ending September 17, 2017, not to exceed 124,300. Resolution 451, authorized reimbursement to Camden County World Playholders, doing business at Camden County, for half of the total certified cost associated with the hiring, training, and examination of Monique County County Officer Michael Powers, not to exceed 6,744,88. Resolution 452, authorized tax collector, transfer credits on several taxes and utility accounts. Resolution 453, approve request for use of city property requested by Rovers University School, the location is Boyd Park, 4th Street and 5th House, this is where Boyd regatta on Saturday, November 8, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 454, approved request for street closing requested by Lady of My Farmer Church, the location is beginning at 74 Morris, 75 Morris Street, traveling on Livingston Avenue, Lawson Street, Bridge, Townsend, Livingston Avenue, George Street, and ended at 75 Morris Street, this is for the religious procession of Lord of the Miracles from Peru. On Sunday, November 2, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., police extra duty required. Resolution 455, approve request for street closing and use of city property requested by the City of New Brunswick Fire Department, this is for the 250th anniversary parade and celebration for the New Brunswick Fire Department, street location and parade route, Dow Street and Reson Avenue, Livingston Avenue, 9th Street, Lewis River Avenue, and United Stadium. The street close the time from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and the Memorial Stadium, the time is from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, October 11, police extra duty required. Resolution 456, approve request for street closing and use of city property requested by Veterans Alliance of Arlington, Grand Town Valley, the location is Apple Street, George Street, Livingston Avenue, along the Square Park, on Highland Park between New Brunswick. The park location is Monument Square Park for a parade for all of the veterans of foreign wars, on Tuesday, November 11, 2014, street closure is from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Resolution 457, authorized reuse of signing inspection fees to weak companies for 258 Eastern Avenue. Resolution 458, after one amendment of Resolution 081 for 35, the reason is to convert amount of credit to 2,145,000 and replace previously outdated ones of 677,50. This is for change order number two final with Jeff Construction LLC for South Newton Road Station Improvement. Resolution 459, approve relaxation of the city lots ordinance requested by National Microwave Contractors, the reason is to place a fire at the end of Senior Street next to the Rovers Alexander Library to set up a generator, on Sunday, September 21, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 460, approve our contract with Traffic Lines Inc., the 2014 traffic lines writing not to exceed 95,057. Resolution 461, approve resolution supporting approved post-stops for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Survey. Resolution 462, approve reuse of Site Performance Guarantee subdivision performance 1 number CSC 50407 in the amount of 189,794, and site inspection fees in the amount of 72,026 to the New Brunswick Development Corporation for New Jersey Coast, 39 Eastern Avenue. Resolution 463, approve reuse of Site Performance Guarantee in the amount of 46,31025 to Alfonso Cantaleon for Arcadi Rusla, 23 Georgia's Road. Resolution 464, authorized purchase by the Police Department of State Contract 8-83925 from Verizon Select Services Inc., who is an authorized dealer for Casidian Communications, for maintenance agreement for Vista Palace, 991 Telephone System, the term is 12 months, commencing on October 18, 2014 and ending on October 17, 2015, not to exceed 17,493,40. Resolution 465, approve amendment of Resolution 051 for 27, the reason is increase in unanticipated expenditures with DGL for us to pull us doing business as medical condition repair on auto painting for auto body repairs for the Police Department, the amount is 6,500, and the approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Resolution 466, approve authorization to advertise for the reconstruction of recreation park. Resolution 467, authorized purchase by Police Department under State Contract 8-83921 for Micro Strategies Inc., for remote network monitoring system service, term is 12 months, commencing on July 21, 2014 and ending on June 20, 2015, not to exceed 4,695, this is nonfrontal. Resolution 468, approve order contract and rejection of bid with verified apparatus in for furnish and deliver of one fire popper, not to exceed 356,314. Resolution 469, approve authorization to advertise for Henry Guest House and Building Management Insurance. Resolution 470, approve resolution authorized support for municipal public access plan and full subordinate immunity assessment grant in the amount of 25,000 from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Resolution 471, resolution to rescind Resolution R 091 for 14, the reason is the original resolution was not necessary. Approve chapter 159 according insertion instead of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the Safe and Secure Communities Program, and the amount was $60,000. Resolution 472, approve chapter 159 according insertion instead of New Jersey for the 2014 price over or get full over state by labor day crackdown, the amount $5,000. Resolution 473, authorized refund to Rover Block Attorney for Donok Cars due to tax for judgment in a total amount of 62,185,30. Resolution 474, establishing dates for Rovers School on Main Days, party for 2014, it's an item for discussion by the council, which is the authorization to enter into an operations support and management services agreement with American Water Operations and Maintenance Inc. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, local?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the pending meeting act has been complied with and satisfied, in that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of its time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Chair, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Home, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
May I ask that we pause for a moment for those American Democrats who are lost to revise the morning in the morning, Anderson? At this time, I'm ready to take a motion to approve the minutes of questioning.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinances for discussion on first reading, ordinance 091 for one, which is an ordinance who may not supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Everson Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control Regulations, this is a mid-block postwork in your contribution place. I move the ordinance setting down October 1 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Same.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance for two is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 12, this type of public place and Chapter 12.28, Parks and Playgrounds, and this is in reference to Brooklyn Park and the Brooklyn Park of Rovers School on Main Days. I move the ordinance setting down October 1 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance for three is an ordinance to amend the Management Salary Ordinance for 2012 through 2014. I move the ordinance setting down October 1 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Same.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have Resolutions 434 to Resolution 474. Anybody in the council who'd like to discuss the same with this?
Just 441, 442. Same.
It had to be done twice.
Twice.
Any comments from the colleague related to the specific in the resolutions that we have? Just as a reminder, please take your name, address, and you have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick. I want to just point of order, this does not include the American Water.
No, that's not it.
So there's no going on, everything else. Thank you very much. So I do want to ask about number 12, ends in four or five, the repair of what's a waterman break. Have there been waterman breaks since that one? Is that always a few months back?
This one should not be a few months back. It was late, I think, in August.
Point of order, my time is taken down. I'm sorry. It's okay.
Let me just look at the resolution for a second. I think this date was mid-August was the break. It was in the outfield beyond the U Sports Complex, beyond the outfield fence, was in a rough area, we needed to bring an insertion valve in to cause the repair of the break, and that was successfully done. The breaks since then, there was a service break on Sedam Street near the railroad, that area that's under construction, the paving project that we're about to embark on. There was a, there was a break this afternoon down by the Weston's Mill Pump Station that will have to be repaired tomorrow, is all I can think of at the moment. There may be more, but that's what comes to mind.
Thank you very much. I want to ask about 18, ends in five or one. Why are we reimbursing a campaign account to Officer Powers?
Officer Powers transferred to the New Brunswick Police Department, and apparently there is regulation that if one employer invests a lot of money in training of a police officer and that person transfers out, that the receiving agency is responsible for some partial reimbursement. The PD reviewed that, as did the law department, and they both think reimbursement to Camden County is appropriate.
Is there a question? Yes, and just following up, so how many more officers are there left to be hired? How many of the 20 spots have been filled?
I'm not sure. We still have a lot of hiring to do, and I mean most likely by the end of the year or into 2015.
Okay, and is it possible more people from Camden County Police would end up coming up here, or is he the only one that's going to come?
Mr. Knight, I don't think that would determine that, but maybe he's...
I couldn't predict, but he's the only one that I know of.
Number 24, site inspection fees for 258 Eastern, that property has passed into development, right? So why are the site inspection fees being released?
So, Kansas, 254, is that right?
They've been released from the Engineering Department, but the property was sold to St. Peter's Hospital, and they're going to develop it, not where, so the, these are being made sense of where.
So because the building's sold?
Yeah.
The fire popper, number 35, why do you need the fire popper? What is it replacing, and I guess how long is it expected to last?
Mr. Knight, if I could receive your...
I'm just going to ask if the Fire Department would answer those questions if they could.
If I could receive your answer to the question, or somebody?
The purchase of this engine is going to replace engine 14, which is a 26-year-old preserved piece. It's, it's, it won't pass, the old engine won't pass its annual pump test, therefore it's been bitted out, replaced.
Okay, and it said rejection of bid, can you tell me whose bid was rejected in the right?
We're rejecting the low bidder inasmuch as they were not, did not perform in terms of getting the right paperwork in on time.
Thank you. The next one, number 36, Henry Guest House and Buckingham Mansion Shutters, I was able to take a look at the mansion just a couple weeks ago, and it's really, it needs a lot more than just shutters, it's really in bad shape. Is there a plan to get it restored, and if so, when will those things happen?
There's a plan being initiated right now to get it restored, I can't give you an exact date at the moment as to when completion will be, but our plan is to replace the front porch that faces the river, as well as repair a section of the roof rafters that is deflecting and causing some ceiling deflection in the upper, in the upper bedrooms.
All right. Then the last one I want to ask about is number four, recent efficiency agenda, what is this for? It's the Donald Vitar's Tax Court.
The tax judgment, the tax court judgment.
This happens from time to time, when one of our taxpayers succeeds in a tax court, and they get a refund, and we have to pay the refund.
Okay, just the name sounds very familiar, but what was his involvement in New Brunswick?
The practice of, what was he, architect here years ago, I don't know if he's still doing that or not.
That's right. Then he built the Fairham Mall, right, or used to architect? Interesting, all right, well I'll look into that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishes to address the council on Resolutions 434 to 474 at this time?
Move the resolutions.
Have you done, yes, second?
1440. 1440.
1440?
Yes.
There's a second to...
There's a second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, we want to go into discussion about the authorization to enter into operations as support and management services everything with American Water Operations and Maintenance Inc. Just as a reminder, please take your name, address, and you have five minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Jim Walsh. I live at 76th May Street, I'm also the State Director of the Food and Water Watch Consumer Advocacy Group that works to protect the human right to water. I guess that first I would just like to ask the council, is there any intention to vote on this deal today, or is it just a discussion listed on the agenda?
There is, there's going to be a vote tonight.
Despite the fact that the public wasn't made aware of that vote, and it's listed as a discussion item on the agenda, except for...
As, as, I was informed that, handling the fact that we have discussion, and the matter from after a discussion, it will vote.
I would also like to ask members of the council, has everyone read the agreement? Is there anyone who hasn't read the agreement on the council? I would like to ask members of the council if they have any provisions within the agreement that they take issue with, or things should be changed, or are this having pages to the city?
This is not a question to be answered.
Through the chair to Councilman Egan, do you have any problems with the agreement? Through the chair to Councilman Fleming, do you have any problems with the agreement? Councilman Anderson, through the chair, do you have any problems with the agreement?
I have, just a lock on, are any employees being laid off from whatever?
No.
Are any of the rate increases that have come because of this, for the Water Department?
The rate increases for 2015 beyond have not been calculated, and they are something that is done every year, and we will increase rates in 2015 if necessary to cover our 2015 expenses.
Is the city still in charge of basically the Water Department?
We are going to manage every function of the water utility, we're going to continue to own every facility, every element of the system, we are buying their expertise in treating water and running the process portion of the treatment plant.
So our expect, we're not privatizing, and we're still in charge?
I don't, I don't view this as privatizing, we're buying for 12 months their ability to provide T4 and W4 services, and their ability to produce ship supervisors as we mutually agree upon, and we are buying their 24-hour, seven-day-a-week review of our SCADA system from a remote location, we're buying their backup W2 and T, excuse me, W4 and T4 licenses, you know, when they may be required.
Thank you, I have no problem.
I just have one question, is, in the, we are seeking a director of the water management, if we identify someone while this agreement is in effect, how will that affect the director position if any? What would be the role?
What would be the role of the director?
The director?
The role of the director will be to manage the entire water utility, customer service office, the business office, the water treatment plant, in the sense that that person will manage the maintenance team, they'll manage the distribution team, they'll manage the American Water Contract. There is someone who's going to, it will be necessary for someone on our side of the contract to manage what they do, to make sure that their billings to us are appropriate, that the staffing that we have talked about is mutually agreed upon, if there are any issues with their work versus our work, you know, I expect the water director to resolve that.
Can you give us a good update on where are we, in the sense of the process to hire a director? a director?
I have interviewed two people at this point, and it appears that both will be asked to come back for a second interview.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Through the chair, Councilman Garlotti, do you have any issues with the contract?
I do not.
Council President Escobar, do you have any issue with the contract?
The, the issues that I have, Mr. Anderson had raised them, and I was just wanting to see if both of the directors, in the sense, while these have been made use in place.
I'm asking that the council reject this contract and really strengthen their oversight for the administration and the management of the city's public water system. It's really concerning that the city has only given the public 48 hours to review a contract, the minimum required. With a decision this big and a contract this bad, the city should hold hearings to ensure residents are not taken advantage of by American Water more than we already have. By agreeing to this deal, the city will lock New Brunswick in an unnecessary and unpredictable cost, and a loss of control over essential services, with little ability to enforce the terms of this contract. The emergency contract is not ideal, but the city is better off extending the arrangement than signing this new one-year contract. I would like to say that I am glad to see that the city has included non-compete clauses, non-solicitation clauses in the contract, which, as far as I can tell, is the only recommendation made by Food and Water Watch that the administration has included. The rest of this deal is riddled with serious problems. Chief among my concerns is the inability of the city of New Brunswick to terminate this privatization contract for convenience. The city should be able to freely exit the arrangement with adequate notice once it hires necessary staff. Termination for convenience is a standard provision in short-term operations and management contracts. Why should the city pay for services we don't need? Can someone answer that question for me from the council? Why we should pay for services we don't need?
Well, at this time, we, by now, we're just paying for services that we need. We don't have a director, and we don't have somebody who's licensed to. If once that person is identified and hired, the process will continue until that person receives one a hand and familiarizes themselves without...
With all due respect, council...
The treatment plant has to continue to operate.
With all due respect, council president, this contract does not allow the city to exit any parts of the agreement due to bringing on new staff.
I don't agree with that sense, because again, the director is gonna be part of the process if he's identified by the year.
Through, through the chair, Administrator Lockland, is there any provision in this contract that allows the city to exit any parts of the contract for convenience in writing?
There's no provision in the contract that exit, that allows the city to exit for convenience.
The city will be on the hook for the entire cost of this contract, even if we don't need it. Can you tell me why we should be paying for services we don't need? No one on the council can answer that?
At this time, we need the services, Mr. Walsh, but I do understand your...
It is standard language in short-term management contracts of private water companies to allow cities to have that. The city and the council should demand that the administration go back and negotiate that provision. I have questions as to whether it's, you know, really a desire of the city to terminate this privatization contract for convenience, or we're locking in this contract for a year, forcing the city to pay money to American Water for staffing and remote monitoring in the SCADA system, even as the city hires its own staff to manage and operate the plant. This will result in unnecessary and redundant costs. Another major concern is a section of consequential damages which seems to forbid the city from suing to enforce a contract or to seek compensation for any damages caused by the country, by the company. This is highly restricted provision that could interfere with the city's ability to ensure high-quality water. Why would the city give up its ability to take the company to court and seek damages through that process?
Mr. Lockland, I know that, I might understand that we are able to do so, right?
Section 13 spells out that we can.
But if you give me a chance and to interrupt, because I didn't interrupt, if I...
I had said to Mr. Walsh earlier that I did not negotiate every single word in this contract, the legalese sections. I would ask Mr. Hamilton to speak to. I did negotiate the overall economics, the basic services to be provided by American Water, the fee schedule, what the owner's responsibilities are, but I'm gonna need Mr. Hamilton to speak to consequential damages.
And the liabilities clause that we have.
Well, liability clause has been eliminated. There was a suggestion by American Water initially that they wanted to limit their liability to a value that was unacceptable. So we said it was a deal breaker, then removed the limitation of liability language in the contract.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, I, I was not involved in the actual day-to-day negotiation of this, but it was an arms-led, and as I understand, pretty intensive negotiation on our side and their side, and that's what happens when you negotiate. You don't get everything you want, and from what I can tell, where the city's negotiator is gonna make a job.
For the record, the city attorney did not address the question that was asked. And the city is opening itself up to tremendous liability and inability to enforce this contract because it is section 13. Under this agreement, the city will open, will be open to additional charges with little ability to prevent increases. To make matters worse, American Water can actually profit off of its improvements the city makes to reduce, that might reduce operating costs for America while the city is on the hook for additional costs and improvements that might increase American Water's costs. Why shouldn't the city receive compensation of circumstances arise that increase their costs, but American Water should get that benefit from the city? Why? No one in the council has an answer for why that would be the case? It's wrong. It's very one-sided. The city will, this is very concerning, the city will have to pay American Water for various actions, including preparing reports related to defending alleged permit violations, even if the violation is American Water's sole fault. The indemnification section of the contract is also complicated. Under the agreement, it seems like no one is responsible for anything, but everyone is responsible for everything. Why does the city want American Water's counsel and staff to handle something that American Water can be culpable for, and then submit and defend the city with those documents while we have competent attorneys and administrators who should be doing that on the city's behalf, while American Water may have a conflict of interest? Why would we want that to happen?
Mr. Hamilton, you have the six...
Yes, Mr. Walsh mentioned this to me five minutes before this evening started. The fact of the matter is that the situation arises, the city is taking all the rights, and I'm gonna call you later, depending whether we get any course back because of the fact that they're taking obligation under the contract. And the sound of words, the review by Mr. Lockland and by Mr. Sherry protects the city as fully as it can, given the fact that there has to be some due and some debt to the contract negotiation.
Through the chair, to the city attorney, how does the city expect to enforce that with clause 13?
Mr. Hamilton, how, you said, are you familiar with clause 13? You said that you want a...
I, I, I've got it here. Those are narrow kinds of damage. They're not full-range damages. They're consequential damages, which are not direct, they're incidental, they're indirect, and if that happens, why, and we have to take all the defenses. I said, we're going.
Yes, Mr. Walsh, next.
Under this agreement, American Water can subcontract out the responsibilities to another entity without the city having any real ability to stop that happening, or being able to benefit from any savings that might occur under this agreement. This is very important, because we've seen private water companies swap contracts across state lines, or change things down the road. Under this provision, the city has very little ability to actually have any control over those sorts of changes happening, where these side agreements and things that have been said in person that Mr. Lockland might believe that they're going to approve of, will not be honored by another entity. Why would the city allow for that sort of dynamic to exist without having really any strong ability to prevent it from happening?
Mr. Walsh, your time is up.
May I request that the council afford me additional time, being that I'm an expert on this issue, I've spent a tremendous amount of time looking at this, I have other comments to make.
I'm just gonna allow for an answer to your last question, and that's, that's it, because we have a lot of people waiting, so thank you.
Does anybody here mind?
Mr. Lock... Excuse me, no, no, there's no start, because I'm the one presiding in the meeting, and I'm the one who says whether it's allowed or not to have an extra minute, and I heard, and I said that I would allow for us to answer your question, and you find me the sorrow. Thank you. That's all I'm asking, thank you. Yes, Mr. Lock?
The agreement says that subcontractors shall be approved by the city. I believe that to mean that should we decide that the use of a subcontractor is not advantageous to us, we would not choose to allow it to happen?
Thank you.
In response to that, because this is an ongoing question...
Mr. Walsh, you've time yourself, you find me the sorrow. Thank you.
I respectfully request two more minutes of time.
I already asked you to please, I already answered your question, and that's the time, this is it.
May I ask, may I ask for a vote on whether or not my time be extended by the council?
We don't, I am the one who is the size of the right, if there's an extension, we are not granted any of this, thank you.
Very disappointed that the council is about to vote on something that the city has a 48 hours notice to look at, and the public, and when it, like, you have the benefit of somebody who spends a lot of time thinking about this, and you're preventing the city and the residents from hearing this, which is very concerning.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. [applause] They must be, every member of American Water, you have five minutes, Mr. Pratt, who's taking the name and address.
Good evening, once again, Charles Pratt of New Brunswick. I want to basically send a strong message to you that, based upon the answers to some of those questions, the only logical, sensible choice for this council tonight is to hold off and table this vote until the next meeting. I don't know when you first saw the draft, but the draft was only made available to the public, like Mr. Walsh said, 48 hours ago. This is a long and complicated agreement. It's in excess of 50 pages, I believe, and I think there are a lot of finer details that need to be worked out. I also think that the current agreement that is in effect, and has been in effect for over two months now, is, for the city, a superior agreement, because it doesn't lock you in, like Mr. Walsh said. But I really want to just hammer home this point, that if you are concerned about the city getting a good water director, you will table this vote tonight. We've been through periods of time where we've had good water directors, and those were people who served very well, and then we had times where we didn't have qualified, a qualified director leading the utility, and those times were bad times. And right now, we're in a bad time where we don't have a water director, but we're close, and Mr. Lockland has been interviewing these two people, and is gonna presumably pick one soon. And both of those people would be better served in their job if they were not tied down to this agreement, having been put through while they were interviewing. They would be mu, I'm certain that they would be much, much rather come into a situation where they have a chance to review the agreement. They're gonna be running the utility, they're gonna be managing the contract. They deserve a chance to review the agreement before it's put in effect. It was testified to tonight that you're close to getting a new water director. Let's wait and see if we can do that first, because that makes the most sense. And if you're concerned about having that good water director that we need, and getting the best person, you don't want to pass this tonight, because this will make them want the job less. And we all understand that it's a tough job, and we need somebody who's up to the challenge, but passing this will make it a less desirable position for these two applicants, and any others that might be in the mix eventually. I think the right thing to do is very, very simple here. Tonight, the city council should table this and take some time to evaluate all of these points that people have brought up, having just looked at it over the past couple of days, and also check in with the water director search, and hopefully bring somebody on board who can have a few days or a week to look at this agreement, give some feedback, and actually have an input on the process. I think you stand to lose nothing by tabling it tonight. I've spoken to the state government, they are not concerned that this agreement has exceeded the original 45 days, the MOU. They are willing to give you time. American Water is definitely willing to give you time, because they want your business, and they're not gonna walk out on you. So at the end of the day, you have nothing to lose by just tabling the vote tonight, and giving everybody some time to work out these finer points, and to actually pursue the real priority, which needs to be getting that great water director the city needs and the city deserves, and then signing an agreement. I hope that you'll take my advice, I hope that you'll do the right thing tonight, and please, just table the vote, and let's come back and do it again.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Lockland, if you could just, with the two people that you said that you have interviewed, does it mean that immediately we want to get a director?
No, no.
That doesn't mean that, it's just...
It's a second, second interview. Should we select someone? I suspect they need to give their current employer notice. But I will, I will say something that is somewhat contradictory to what Mr. Pratt said. I have direction from the DEP that this matter needs to be resolved in mid-September. This is not a, this is not an artificial deadline, this is a directive from Fred Sickles of the DEP that this matter be resolved in mid-September. So I don't know who Mr. Pratt was speaking with. I take Mr. Sickles' advice seriously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you may.
My name's Tyler Dan Kirk, I live at 100 Bayard Street. To that point, do we have anything in writing from the DEP that...
Please, you live at 100 Bayard?
Or, sorry, 124, my apologies. I work at 100 Bayard.
That's an office building.
I'm hiding.
Okay, that's okay.
It's very, very cozy. To that point, is, do we have anything in writing, any...
I'm just not writing anything.
My apologies. Do we have anything from the DEP in writing that names that mid-September deadline?
Mr. Lockland?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, is there anything from the DEP that the, you know, month-to-month extension of our current contract with American Water would not cover the requirements proposed to us by DEP?
Mr. Lockland?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
He said, I guess if we have a month-to-month contract or agreement, would that be sufficient for DEP to say there is a...
I'm, I'm dealing the act on this successor agreement in mid-September as a directive from the DEP that the continuation of the month-to-month arrangement under the MOU is not acceptable to them. That's how I interpret that.
And what is the, what's the fine or penalty if we don't come into compliance?
We don't know the time.
I don't know the answer to that. I suppose one of the things they could do is to tell us to shut the plant down, buy water from someone else, which I would not recommend, but I do not know the penalty, if there is a penalty.
Mr. Hamilton?
We don't want to find out, Mr. Rockland, this is one possible scenario, we just don't want to find out what the penalty is.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'd just first like to state, I'm disappointed that the council didn't afford Mr. Walsh more time, as he arguably has spent more time working with private water companies than anybody else in this room. I think that's very disappointing. So I'd just like to get to a couple of points here. For now, the city has not made any steps or given any indication that they would hold an independent investigation, or take any other action to ensure that we never get into this situation again. The city council has also not asked for a plan from the administration to bring the city under full public operation, or that regular reports be given on the implementation of such a plan. So my question is, do we, has there been any commitment from the council, from the administration, that we will bring the city into, into full public operation, and essentially end this contract with American Water?
Well, at this time, we have always said that we needed to get into this contract, because we don't have anybody in the city right now who's able to operate the water, and we want to continue to provide the best water, and safe water to our residents. We have always said, this council has been very vocal and very pointed in saying that we don't believe this is private, you know, this is not privatizing the services, as some people think, that we're giving everything out for American Water to continue. We are in control of the water department. They are providing the treatment services that we need at this time, that we do not have the personnel to do so. We have every, at the meetings, in terms of a director, we have been giving updates, and I have asked for updates to the position, what's going on, how close are we. There is something that we had talked about also, and we have said publicly, that we will have an update any time we need, just to make sure that operations of the water department continues to be optimal, and that they continue to provide the best services. I would say that we will get, I will request an update on how it is going.
Okay. But as of right now, there's no, there's no written approved plan by the council to bring the city under full public control? Aside from the fact that you don't, you don't view this as privatization?
No.
There's a Sarah Palin lipstick on a pig joke in here somewhere.
Yes, you know, so say potato, someone say potato, you know, so it's a difference. But the plan... But the plan is that the city, the business administration, the staff, the water department, they are doing what they need to do, the plan is to continue trying to get the director and to continue doing what, working with American Water to make sure that we issue the services to our residents. I'm not, they don't know anything, so I'm assuming that this is something that we will continue forward, that we will continue working together and planning.
Okay. I guess, you know, one of the things that I don't understand, and maybe this, this may be my ignorance, is that, you know, I don't understand how bringing in a private corporation whose, whose really sole motivation is profit, you know, their sole duty, American Water's sole duty is to their shareholders, not to the city of New Brunswick, not to the public, not to their ratepayers, but to their shareholders. I don't understand how we can, we can ultimately expect a private entity to ultimately act in the interest of the public and ultimately save the city money, you know, I, which I, so I guess that's perhaps, you know, something that I don't...
I understand that right now they have the licenses that we need in order, and they are not just doing it, you know, taking control, our employees, our staff is in control at that point, and they're overseeing, they're working close in hand with American Water. So right now they have the license, we are, it's either we shut down or we continue services, and that's why we have to get into this agreement in the first place. So it's not that we're just living, okay, here, you take care, and we just, our hands are off as the city of New Brunswick, that's not the case. Our employees will continue to be overseeing, working along with them, and what better than our employees that know the water treatment plan and know how the system works? That we don't have the licenses required right now for somebody to be there is another story, that's why they're providing. But I, I believe in, in our staff, I believe in their expertise, and I think that this, this is the best solution at this time for the city of New Brunswick.
Okay. Well, since to conclude, you know, I think overall, the, the council really, I think, needs to become more active in the oversight of the water system. The problems that got us into this situation in the first place will most certainly come back to haunt us. I think, you know, continuing our relationship with American Water only eliminates our own recourse, you know, our, our own ability to, to really address the root cause of these problems. The first thing that the council should do is reject this contract, we need a better deal, make the administration continue to negotiate something that's in the public interest, that doesn't lock us into an obscene amount of money for a year, whether we want it or not, and something that will do more to help the city and less to profit American Water. Again, I hope the council will reject this deal.
I wanted to point out, particularly, you know, that we know a sign of the fact that the water that is produced is water that is owned by the city. It's not a case where American Water or somebody else is one of the private waters on New Brunswick market, or that's our water, and they're treating it for us and managing it in a way that is to be like our water.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on this matter?
Yes, my name is Lisa Nelson, I live at 1441 East Navarre Avenue, is that the sunset? But New Brunswick, I consider, kind of by stopping around the last five years. And I would just like respectfully to hand the council copies of a report by Food and Water Watch, which is a similar to a report that I submitted to Franklin Township when they were undergoing pressure about management and control of the water. And so, control is very important, and in order, of course, to have more control, information is really great, so I respectfully submit these reports. Thank you.
You can move it to the chair.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Hi, Lauren Petrie, 124 Bayard Street, New Brunswick, also organizer for Food and Water Watch. We noticed that the one thing that is missing from this contract is an at-will or an exit clause, and I'm just wondering why that doesn't exist.
Mr. Lachlan, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I'll try. We pursued early termination language with American, they rejected it. They explained to us that a twelve-month agreement is not their typical agreement, they always insist on something longer term, that they are adding staff to be able to perform under the contract, and they were, they were not in favor of an early termination agreement. We did pursue it with them, it was not acceptable, and we, we accepted their answer. Now, I did speak with the president of American Water and suggested that should we be in a position to bring on a water utility director who is fully licensed, and should we get to a point where we think we can bring on a water treatment plant superintendent who is fully licensed, that it would be then appropriate to sit down with them and talk about the remaining value of the contract? They agreed with that.
Did you hear that, she was talking, I don't know if you heard what he said.
I didn't hear, but the tail was a bit of something.
She was talking, he said that...
I was listening, actually, but I was...
Yeah, you were talking, we're not listening.
I mean, it's part of my five minutes, it is what it is.
Where, where do you want me to repeat from?
You have said that American Water clearly wants, you know, they don't want to do anything less than twelve months.
Correct, and I said that should we get into the position where we have retained a water utility director who's fully licensed, and should we find a water treatment plant superintendent who's fully licensed, that it would then be appropriate to sit down with American Water and discuss the remaining value of the contract? They agree to that.
Okay, thank you for repeating that, I appreciate that. So why can that not be included in the contract in writing? And why is that only on American Water's terms?
Mr. Lachlan? Oh, Mr. Havelton?
The terms of the contract are those that both parties agree to, and as Mr. Lachlan has now said either two or three times, they were unwilling to agree to that exit line. They were willing to have this conversation that he just described, but in order to have an agreement, the two parties have to agree to the same thing.
But it doesn't sound like you are agreeing to the same thing. And that's a red flag right there, right? I mean, if you hire a contractor and you do work on your house, and they say, it's my way or the highway, and I'm doing this work for as long as I say I'm doing it, and there's nothing you can do to end this contract, even if you're not happy with the work, are you, as a homeowner, going to sign that contract? By signing this contract, you're not tying yourself, you're tying every single resident in New Brunswick to this contract. So, the last thing I want to say is, that being said, I strongly encourage you, on behalf of every resident that didn't have time or the awareness, because this, this was posted to the New Brunswick website less than forty-eight hours ago, that folks that don't even know that this is happening, to give people an opportunity, bring them into the conversation without tying them to this contract unknowingly, that is unfair, unfair and disrespect to the residents that you serve as elected officials. Please table this contract for further discussion.
Mr. Lachlan? The notice from the water department, so of this contract, and, I mean, was it given in less than forty-eight hours? When did we post it?
It was posted sometime Monday afternoon, I don't know the exact time. The, the document was not in its final condition, it needed some even additional amendments on Monday morning, and we posted it as soon as it was, those amendments were made.
So it was Monday afternoon?
It was Monday afternoon, I don't know the exact time. It's not less than forty-eight hours? I don't know the exact time it was posted. I think it's less than, I think it's more than forty-eight hours at, at the moment, but I don't know, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not, I'm not the webmaster, I didn't put the, the matter on the website.
Do we know when we were posted?
I don't know the exact time, off the top of my head, but I do believe there's a timestamp on the post, hold up, but it was posted on Monday afternoon.
Hello, hi, my name's Lindsay Sigmund, I'm a New Brunswick resident, I'm also a Rutgers University student. Well, I just want to say just on that, like, who cares if it wasn't forty-eight hours, it was this week, that's still not enough time for the public to, like, read through and make their own decision, but I just want to make a comment on this contract, so, but first, also, I'm the campaign coordinator on campus for Take Back the Tap, we're a group of students, we work to educate the art peers about water privatization and about the many downsides about privatizing water resources. So I'm here to say that I think this contract is a bad idea, to say the least, I second everything that has been said by other people for Food and Water Watch. So, water is a human right, it's a public good, and it shouldn't be managed by a public, a public entity such as American Water. Corporations exist to maximize profits, and if this decision is made, it's at the expense of transparency and public, and it's made at the, made at the expense of public participation in this decision. So, we're asking that you put the public's interest before private water companies, and I'm asking that you don't sign this contract and that you keep New Brunswick's water supply public. Just wanted to make a comment to say, on the half, on behalf of Rutgers University and the students that stand behind our organization, we think this is a bad idea. I'm sorry?
We're not giving away the water department, it's under the city's control, just to clarify that. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on this specific issue?
Good evening, everybody, I live at 175 Renson Avenue, my name is Xavier, I think that, that's kind of ridiculous, that they put in forty-eight hours for the work. They should let everybody know before, I'm like, you know, sending a paper saying that we're going to do these kind of changes, I think they, they should notify everybody, because it looks bad for the city of New Brunswick.
What is the requirement? Most to be here, there are no requires for the city to be forty-eight hours, no worries.
Scott Tureaus, in the city of New Brunswick Water employee. You guys have heard a lot tonight about why the city shouldn't enter a contract. I'm going to tell you from somebody who's on the inside, behind the fences, and seeing what's going on firsthand, why you shouldn't enter a contract. The search for a director is an important thing, it should not be handled in a quick manner, it should not be a knee-jerk reaction to, you know, a bad director. We've gone through this time and time again, you can have a good director, you can have a bad director. To hire somebody just because we're afraid of a temporary contract with a water, private water company is not a good idea. We need to get the right water director to ensure that we never go back to this place again. As far as what's going on, everybody's under this, you know, imaginary world that American Water has come in, they've lived there forty-five days, they've taken complete control of the plant, it's so far from the case, it's, they've come in, they've supplied us with the T4, a W4, which we need. The DEP does not say, give a date, and say you need this by then, just for fun. They're not going to come back at, on September eighteenth and say, oh, don't worry about it, we're just kidding, you have another year to find a director. It doesn't happen. Been in the water industry for ten years, never seen the DEP do something as a joke. Our day-to-day routine, they come in, they're T4, we have the shift supervisors who are overlooking our guy's stuff, to make sure that everything is up to par and up to their standards, which are above standard across the board. I, I don't see how that's a bad thing. And the day-to-day operations of the plant are still in our hands, it's still our city employee, operators who are operating, it's our maintenance team who are maintaining the plant and providing water for the citizens of New Brunswick. Without this deal, we get shut down, we go to bulk water, buying, purchasing bulk water, and twenty-five-plus families are out of the job. That's the reality of it. If we go to buying bulk water, we're not coming back, it'll be privatized in one way or another from here on out. I had a choice to leave the city six months ago, when all this start, talk and everything and happened, I chose to stay. I've had many conversations with Mr. Lachlan, I've had conversations with the mayor, I feel very confident that they're taking every role for the city to retain, and I want to be a part of that, I want to be a part of a bright future. Only way we're going to have that future is to continue a partnership, I don't even want to call it a contract, to continue a partnership with American Water and move forward from there until we find the right director and the right superintendent to, you know, I've seen no wording, all I've seen for the past six months coming to these meetings is people telling you, we need to make a change. It's crazy the way that the city's running the water department, we need to make a change, we need to make a change. But we've got a great change. Every single day at that water department, we have a hundred-plus years of experience in one room, giving us the best quality of water, helping us, you know, build the plant up to expectations nationwide right now, and it's just, it's not a horrible thing. You can't say you want to change, and then when the change comes, say, I don't want that change. It's, you know, there's only a couple avenues that a water department can take, and that's really it. So I do urge you, from somebody who works there on a day-to-day basis, who has worked for the past forty-five days with the American Water guys, to consider, if you do table the vote till next week, consider everything involved, don't just go on a panic situation. This is a fourteen-year contract, like, you know, American, or a ten-year contract, like American would usually do, I would be standing here right along with everybody else saying it's a horrible idea, don't enter it, it's atrocious. Private water companies do not enter one-year contracts. This is, you know, they know as well as we do, it's not a permanent thing. And the other thing you need to keep in mind is that when we originally went out for the first bids for somebody, when we lost our T4 W4, we only had one option at that point, and that was American. And, you know, everybody else did not come to the table, they didn't give us an option, American did, and the fact that they want to do, lower their limitations to what they usually do, the one-year contract, I think you have to take what's on the table before we lose the plant completely for years and years and years to come. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on this specific matter? Having none, we have resolution...
We have the formal resolution, before you, copies out of the library out there. We will be number seventy-five, I think.
Can I have somebody? A more resolution to our... So to the council?
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
At this time, no, because I have any challenges with the agreement, just because I feel that I wasn't aware, fully aware that we were voting tonight, I thought it was a discussion, at this time, I must, I must say, no way. Thank you. At this time, we have the public discussion part of the meeting, any member of the public wishes to address the council, just please go forward, you have five minutes to address the council, and you say your name and address.
I'm Xavier Franco, I live at 175 Renson Avenue. I would like to ask, to address to you, I would like to know those walking pedestrian signs, you know, those that are on the yellow lines, I don't know what they call.
The pedestrian signs?
Yes, I would like to know if they can put some on Renson Avenue, because the other day, my wife was crossing, she almost got hit by the car, by a car.
Where are you crossing at?
You know, Renson between Delavan Street, you know, that quarter, between, like, you're going towards Stroup, and, um...
The crosswalks that you need there, the ones that are lighted, or the signs that are lighted?
No, 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 there's very little sign, you know, the, don't light up, those are the ones that they have on Renson Avenue, the ones that you walk, that the people can see you're crossing.
Yeah, the crosswalk. Yeah, the crosswalk, I thought that we, there was something...
They need more, because there's a lot of people crossing on that street, and my wife almost got hit in a car two days ago, when the kids walked in and strolled in.
Mr. Golding, are there any crosswalks?
Yeah, I can look. Yeah, I can look. Because if you can put a, Rensen Avenue, between Delavan.
Delavan.
I appreciate.
You have a parking lot.
And what about the garbage cans on the street?
What about them?
Are they going to keep putting more garbage cans on the street so we can keep the city and the town clean?
You know, we will make sure that somebody.
Because I want, I...
You have to call Donna Caputo.
Okay, I try to, I try to get a hold of him and I can never talk to him. His secretary is always saying, oh, you can't, he's always busy.
Mr. Xavier, we will make sure that we send her a message because sometimes if he's told to put them on the sidewalk, sometimes they don't have enough and there's, there is a process that needs to be taken, you know, in order to do it. So we will make sure that, that we follow where we send the message to her.
I always try to get a hold of her and when she says, you cannot talk to the director because he's always busy or...
Well, you can talk to Donna Caputo, she's the one in charge of...
Donna Caputo?
Yes.
Okay, I'll talk to her sometime because I always call the township.
She's recycling and, and, Sarek is the one in charge, but if he's not available, maybe Donna can help. Yes, Mr.?
I was just going to ask, where were you hoping for the additional garbage cans and what location?
Like, French Street, on, what is that called, on Rensen? Because there's a lot of business there, there's bars, there's, you know, the supermarkets and there's, you know, restaurants. And I want to know about the liquor store. I brought the picture in my camera to, what's his name?
Mr. Lachlan.
Mr. Archer. I would like to know what's going on with the liquor store.
Do you know who was the guy?
Not being used, not being pictured by the liquor store.
No, no, no. What's his name? I forget.
Sound?
No.
Yes, sir.
What's your name, sir?
Did you get?
Hamilton.
Oh, Mr. Hamilton. I brought, I brought the picture for you on my camera. I would like to show you the corner of the liquor store to mention last week when you were on vacation.
Mr. Xavier, why is it, I don't recall if you could remind us, why is it that you have the, the...
Oh, I told you last meeting about the, because there's people drinking beer, drinking in front of liquor stores. And he said, just show me the picture and show me the address where the location is.
So you follow me down, okay.
I do recall.
Okay. So he will see you at the, at the...
Again, the meeting, I appreciate because I would like, there's too many people doing drugs on Timon and on, between Rensen Avenue. We need to stop this. We need more officers to patrol in that area. There's too many going on. This needs to stop. I think, I think this needs to stop already. This is too much. This town is getting ridiculous. Thank you.
Good evening. Noah Aaron, Southern City, New Jersey. At the last council meeting on August 20th, Council President, you stated it was your understanding that Mr. McDougall would receive some sort of written correspondence regarding his IA hearing review. You then spoke to Mr. Hamilton, who also stated that it was his understanding that he didn't know if it went out that day, but it was definitely going out that week. However, it appears to be giving false information because Mr. McDougall has not received anything and it's been an entire month later. So I'd like to know, what's the status of that? What's going on? Why were we given false information?
And Mr. Hamilton, do you know?
He wasn't given any false information, he's given the best information yet at the time. My office was told by Judge Hoffman this afternoon, late this afternoon, that reported that it's going out today. More on the truth, a letter from the city relative to his employer.
So, this was just, we just were made aware of this today?
We had a conversation with the director who was going out three, four weeks ago.
So the report, we have to wait for that in order to let it be?
I don't have the report.
What does the process for, the process that is set forth in this, for this particular issue, what does the process says that whoever puts forth a complaint, what is, are they entitled to respond in two weeks, in one week? What is, what is the process states?
Report can't be sent out until the hearing officer signs it.
I understand, but if somebody put a, a, open a case because they feel that they were not, their case back in 2013, 2013 was not handled according to their best assessment that by the Internal Affairs Unit, they filed, they had the opportunity to file for the case to review through the process that we said they, I mean, re-creation and start the process. If I could have complained and the process was fully implemented and the judge heard at the hearing, how long does the process says that I have to wait to receive that response from the hearing officer?
I was interested to direct that to Ms. Gay because I don't have a protocol with it, but I would have to. It's my side of court, by the judge. By the judge, it's certain information. Mr. McDougall, for his own reasons, didn't want to file, so that some suspense or part of the delay, possibly because Mr. McDougall didn't want to provide that information.
And, and that might be the case, but how, if I don't provide the information, does that mean that I have to wait to get that information to complete the report? Or can the judge just make a report based on the information that he has in front of him? Ms. Gay?
If you recall, back in July, he issued an interim report and asked Mr. McDougall to remind him of the names and addresses of additional witnesses, only eight and 30 days to do that. Mr. McDougall, instead of doing that, sent a letter saying that he didn't believe that he ought to do that. And then after that, from what I'm hearing, Mr. Hamilton thought that he was going to get the report. We all thought for a long time he had the report and I don't know what happened between then and now as to why we don't have the report, but we don't have the report. But if, but if you're asking about what the protocol requires, it says within, I believe, and I don't quote me on this, but at least I think between 30 days after the hearing that you'll get the report. We got the interim report and we were waiting for additional witnesses so that the police could do an investigation, could continue their investigation. We never got that information from Mr. McDougall and Judge Hoffman could not complete this report.
Wow.
As I have the report.
Excuse me, Council President. The facts are being misrepresented and I'm sure Council President and Council in general remembers, complaints were filed with how they're violating the protocols, how they're acting beyond the scope of the review. We demonstrated that, we brought in the proof, brought in the protocol, showed you the protocol, brought in my hearing report where he acknowledged that it's not his role to investigate and then never did Mr. McDougall refuse to provide that information. He says when they follow the protocol, he will be glad to provide that information. So we've been waiting on them to follow the protocol and they refuse, they continue to violate. So let's be clear on that, they're misrepresenting the facts. As usual, they are lying and deceiving the council, which is why I charged them with unethical conduct. So, and we were here a month ago, these weren't the excuses that were given. We were told he would receive something within the week. So there's no excuse for him not receiving something within the week. Now they're giving all these lame excuses.
I think that, at the time that Mr. Hamilton answered, he was to the best of his knowledge with the information that he had. And then prior to that, Ms. Gay was trying to give an explanation before then we got into this, you know, little argument and then we didn't have a chance to, in a, in a clear manner and, and, to be able to address those issues with her, because she wasn't here. I'm, what do we tell you, Sez?
Just, just one thing, because what you said, well, she wasn't here, no, she deliberately left. Let's make that clear, that's not.
She, she is.
In the middle of us discussing it, she chose to leave.
What I will tell you, Mr. Chavez, I, George Hoffman is requiring some information from Mr. Hamilton at the time that, at the last meeting, that's the best that he, that he knows. I really don't know why is it that he's, particularly from finishing this report, whether it was on him or whether he needs some more information from Mr. McDougall, I don't, I don't know because I am...
I presented the bill to you, I presented everything, proving it to the council.
Yes, Mr. Chavez.
I will give you a call when he will, let you know whether we have received a number of times to improve what we promised to them. You already went again and then I promised to that.
What does, the interim report we see, the interim report, that's where George Hoffman was asking for more information, the witnesses, is that part of the protocol?
No, no.
Excuse me, I'm asking Ms. Gay, is that part of the protocol that he has, that he needs to do that?
Yes. He, he is to ensure that a proper investigation takes place. And as part of that, he says, well, listen, there were witnesses that he thought the police ought to investigate, ought to interview. We don't know the witnesses' names or where they live, where their addresses, but he wanted that information so that he could give it to the police so that they could properly interview those witnesses.
And that's part of the protocol? Or is it just, you know, I'm just trying to say, I read the protocol, maybe I am not too familiar with it, but that wasn't, it wasn't clear.
It didn't state specifically what I just said, but it just said that the hearing officer is to ensure a proper investigation and part of that is what Judge Hoffman asked for.
And opposite?
May I ask you this, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
It doesn't, it doesn't state specifically if there are witnesses that have not been named by a complaint, that Judge Hoffman will go back and ask for it. He said, as part of a proper investigation, I believe that's what he ought to do.
It's implicit in what the protocol says, it may not be explicit in this.
Council President, it's not explicit nor is it implicit. And he already exposed that in my hearing report that I presented to the council where he described the scope of the review. And he said it's not his job to conduct an investigation. So they can't now turn around and say, he's, he is to conduct an investigation. He said in his report, he's not to conduct an investigation.
I don't think that's what I said. I said, he said he was to ensure that a proper investigation takes place. He never once said that that was part of his job. Part of ensuring a proper investigation is giving the police officers the information so that they can do a proper investigation. I don't know how else to say that.
Once again, Council President, that's incorrect also. His job is to review the facts that are presented at the hearing to determine if a proper investigation had been conducted by Internal Affairs. And if he gets the evidence and it proves it has not, his job is to give a recommendation to the complaint and then from that point on, they reopen the investigation and then he will be glad to provide them with all the information they request when they follow the proper protocols. They are violating the protocols, trying to backdoor an improper investigation to give the Internal Affairs a chance to correct their improper investigation. They don't get a chance to correct it until it's been first acknowledged and documented that they conducted an improper investigation. That's how the protocol works. So she's lying to you again and he's lying to you again, publicly.
I, I think that, and I hear you because, you know, in some parts of the protocol, I, my understanding is the same as yours.
Thank you.
That's...
And I'm stretching for that answer.
And I'll be honest, you know, that's my understanding. So this is a process that we still, you know, never even comment and I think that, and I don't think it's, you know, and I said this, I don't think it's, is the protocol is the challenge. I think it's, you know, sometimes it's maybe some of the words that I have that is not explicit or the way we are communicating effectively quite in the process. Because I think that the process, the protocol works, it shows that we need to, we might have to tweak it here and there and see where we're staying.
It works and they will follow it, they violating.
But again, you know, like Mr. Hamilton just said, there's some parts that is not to be, you know, I am not a law person, I'm not a lawyer. So if I do something, it might be what is explicit to, Mr. Hamilton, it might not be explicit to me. So it has to be in a sense that it's understandable for everybody to understand the process again. But I don't think that they are, that Mr. Hamilton or Ms. Gay are lying, it's just I think it's the understanding of the process, that's where we are, and implementation, that's where the issues lie, not of the protocol, in the protocol itself. Because I understand it the way you do, maybe I'm, I'm not, I am wrong, I don't know.
No, he understood correctly, they're lying.
This is something that we need to, and I'll be, I don't know how many minutes he has, it was just two more minutes, I just want to be, but I will tell you this, Mr. Chavez.
Yes, ma'am.
I have tried my best to understand it, so I still have questions. It's not a surprise to anybody that that's how I feel. Saying that, I'm still working and see, to see what would be the best way to look at the protocol, to understand it better. So hopefully I have some type of recommendation within the next, by the next meeting of how we could address that, that, the implementation of the protocol or understanding of the protocol. Because again, I do have some questions myself, that's all I will say at this time.
All right, I'll move on to the next issue. At the last meeting, Ms. Gay's excuse for her, Mr. Hoffman willfully choosing to violate the IA protocols for the second time in a row was that they produced a transcript, which is how they do it in court. Once again, as usual, her representation was false. That's not how they do it in court. Routinely, the New Brunswick Municipal Court makes audio recordings of all court proceedings. That's the routine, that's the norm. When you go to a court proceeding, the magistrate, the municipal judge announces, turn off all cell phones, devices and be quiet because these proceedings are being audio recorded. The only way you get a transcript is you have to request a transcript and put down, I believe, a $300 deposit to get a transcript. So it's not that the transcript is automatically made, the audio recording is automatically made and a transcript is only produced upon request. So you were deceived again when she told you that they produced a transcript, they violated the protocols which call for, the protocols call for following the routine of making an audio recording. Her lie was, her excuse was, well, we follow, we produce a transcript because that's how we do it in court. That's not how they do it in court. And at Mr. McDougall's hearing, at his IA hearing, she tried to produce evidence against him and it wasn't a transcript, it was an audio recording of his municipal court case, not a transcript. So clearly she's lying to you again. So lastly, since I filed a complaint against her and Mr. Hoffman for unethical conduct, all I need to know is what is the status of my complaint?
I don't know how, I think there's a penalty.
That's the Board of Ethics responsible.
No, I already addressed that and made it clear that as a community liaison officer, that has nothing to do with the Board of Ethics. The council was responsible for her as a community liaison. We addressed this last month already.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, but the Board of Ethics has responsibility on ethics complaints and the time that I have to get scheduled is running and it hasn't run yet and Mr. Chavez will hear from either the council, Board Chairman Molar, the attorney, maybe they may not be named to the Board of Ethics.
Once again, I, I need to say this.
We need the council, we're talking about the council.
And he was here when he tried to say that the last time and I corrected it and the council acknowledged that you do have authority over her. The mayor and the city council established the community liaison office and you are the ones to properly determine whether she should be disciplined or not and to review my unethical conduct complaint against the community liaison officer. You acknowledged that at the last meeting.
Duly noted, Mr. Chavez. We will have an answer for you in terms of everything else by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Karen Bosh, Southern City, New Jersey. I am disgusted that we are still here talking about the same stuff. It was simple. Mr. McDougall had witnesses, Internal Affairs did not interview. That violated Attorney General guidelines.
Right.
Mr. Hoffman was to look at the evidence Mr. McDougall presented regarding his internal affairs investigation. Now it seems like you want to say, she's saying Mr. Hoffman needs to have the names of these witnesses so that, whatever you say. The point is, and I'm trying to hold my composure, Mr. Hoffman has nothing to do with those witnesses. Sergeant Shaw acknowledged that he... Sergeant Shaw acknowledged that he didn't even remember Mr. McDougall saying he had witnesses, therefore he didn't interview them. The witnesses existed, they were never interviewed. Internal Affairs did not conduct a proper investigation. All Mr. Hoffman had to do, and I made this clear to you, Ms. Escobar, go back, look at the recording, please. Ask Mr. Hoffman to make the recommendation that Internal Affairs reopen the investigation and Mr. McDougall will provide Internal Affairs the names of the witnesses so that they can interview them if they want to do that now, correct their error or their wrongdoing or their negligence. If they want to correct it after the, the recommendation is given, we went through all of this. Why can't you now go and look at these videos and familiarize yourself with this man's problem and it could have been fixed? But here, here we are being told that you don't understand. It's simple. Internal Affairs is supposed to contact him because Ms. Gayden said on your record, the investigation is reopened. Mr. Hoffman did give the recommendation. That's not what the interim decision or report said. It was asking him for information, which he can provide to Internal Affairs because they're the ones that have to interview the witnesses. I made the point before, whatever the witnesses have to attest to about that naive question has nothing to do with Mr. Hoffman's position as to whether or not Internal Affairs conducted a proper investigation. They did not. And it's like we're here months later and nothing. Because they don't want to put on, in, in writing on paper that after looking at the evidence, Mr. McDougall proved he had two witnesses. Those witnesses were never interviewed, that's a violation, therefore Internal Affairs needs to reopen that investigation and now conduct it properly and take it from there. You don't want to put that on a piece of paper and we're getting this dance and we're going in circles and Ms. Gayden is saying, well, Judge Hoffman needs to know, you know, this and that. All of that is irrelevant. Like how many times have we got to come here for this? This is ridiculous. I am so sick and tired of coming here with getting passive aggressive answers and responses to everything and we come here every two weeks and we get nothing. But had it been him doing something wrong, a decision would have been made immediately. We're fighting for justice for a man that was violated and we can't get nothing. It's layman, it's layman terms, I'm spelling it out for you. Internal Affairs did not conduct a proper investigation. They need to reopen it to talk to his witnesses. That has nothing to do with Ms. Gayden, has nothing to do with Mr. Hoffman. All they need to do is make the recommendation. Now he's saying, well, Mr. McDougall was required, or Mr. Hoffman requested some information Mr. McDougall didn't, didn't, um, you know, provide it. Mr. McDougall acknowledged he will provide it to the proper people. Internal Affairs give the recommendation and now we got to wait two more weeks for that. This is ridiculous.
I just want to say that, I just want to say that from the get-go and I said that I will not make, and this council doesn't make any, eh, determinations about the outcomes of the case and I have a very clear about the outcomes of specific of the case. What I've been seeing, and, and this is what I, I agree, is that I, I still have some challenges with the way the protocol, which is that's where we have the, the, the responsibility to make sure that it's being done. How is the protocol is being implemented and, and that it's done properly as we intended to. So in terms of a specific of cases, that's not our review, we don't have anything to do with that. For just the implementation, I just want to be, and I have said that very clearly from the get-go.
And I understand that, the only reason I'm making the point of the procedure is to show you that he's going above and beyond the scope of his position as a hearing officer. All he needs to do is make the recommendation because the evidence was presented to him. It's simple and I don't know why they're trying to make it difficult and I believe they're making it difficult because they don't want to acknowledge the truth. He was violated. The investigation wasn't proper, it wasn't done correctly and they need to man up, be honest, admit it and move forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, so the next step basically, what you heard from Judge Hoffman today, that he's supposed to make a ruling by Monday, please?
He's supposed to put in the mail first, I go see how money.
A final report, because he did an interim report according to what you said.
That's the next step, the final report.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify something, I keep referring to hearing officer Hoffman as judge, he's a hearing officer, he's not a judge, he's an retired judge.
Retired, that's what you're right.
Thank you.
He's a judge.
Hearing officer.
He's a judge, he's an retired judge, so he just had the time for that.
Well, um, I'm here again, um, of course, I'm sure you, you know why I'm here. Um, you told me from the beginning to follow the process, um, to see if it works and, you know, yada, yada, yada. Mr. Chavez went through the process and we proved that it didn't work. Now I'm also going through the same process and I'm also proving that it doesn't work. Um, last month, I believe, uh, Mr. Hamilton said something to God, I was supposed to receive something in the mail. I haven't received anything. Um, I believe my hearing was over four months ago and I haven't got a decision, you know, and I think the issue, I think the problem is the truth, you know? I re, I'm displaying the truth. I have witnesses supporting my story, I had them from the beginning, I told IA, um, Internal Affairs, they disregarded that, they didn't want to interview them. And even at my hearing, um, they do have my, uh, witnesses' information because I brought two notarized witness affidavits, you know? So even after four years, I tracked them down again and they put their statements again on paper and they got a notarized. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward and, you know, I'm tired of going through the same process. You know, we got these crooked police working, still in the force, two police that planted marijuana on me. And, um, you guys put this process in place and I'm following it. You know, I'm doing everything by the book and I still get no answer. It seems as though at first Internal Affairs tried to cover up and hide, you know, the, what was going on, the evilness that was going on. Now it seems as if Charlie Gayden took over. Now I guess hearing officer Hoffman is conspiring with her too. You know, it's pretty obvious. You know, give me my recommendation, Internal Affairs didn't interview my witnesses, so now they have the chance to, but I will provide any information that is needed, you know, after they give me my recommendation. But still and all, I did bring two witness affidavits to my hearing the day of and I provided those. So they know who my witnesses are. You know, they're not hiding anything like that, they have nothing to hide, they have nothing but the truth to tell. But, I mean, what, what's going on, I think is now, what, what's, what's, what's going to happen now? You know, they keep ducking and dodging me saying I'm going to get papers and, and all this other stuff, I haven't gotten anything.
As, as, as you heard before, Mr. Chavez, how he's going to assure that he's going to tell the department more, he's going to get the answers, right?
I had to do that, I will direct it. He told my office, he said, he told my secretary, said that he put it in the mail. I assumed he had that by money.
So can you be sure and verify that that was something?
I will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we never read the letters that we sent.
I do.
You do? I hope so, because you take time to put those documents together, put time and money in there because this is something that comes from the heart. We know, I know firsthand what happened to me that night.
I, and I do, and, you know, I have, if I play just a video, Mr. Chavez, I send it again because I couldn't open it, so yes, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, my thing is, I just want to be clear about this too. Um, I remember before, when I came here a long time ago, I said, I'm like a pit bull and I lock on, I ain't going nowhere. I have a pit bull, he likes to play with toys and stuff like that and I ain't going nowhere, you know? I ain't going nowhere. I know what happened and I'm fighting for it, so you can throw whatever you want to throw at me. You know, I'm a stand-up gentleman, I'm a stand-up man, you know? I know what happened to me and I want justice, simple as that. You know, I don't have a problem with no one up here, I just have a problem with those crooked officers that planted that marijuana on me. And that's why I'm here and I'm going to keep coming, you know? I'm going to keep coming and we're going to keep filing this, filing that, you know, until we get answers. And then even after that, you know, if we got to take it a step further, we're going to keep doing it, so get used to me.
Thank you. Mr. Carrigan, you have five minutes to address the council.
Yeah, I want to say first off, I'm so proud of the three people who just spoke and completely support them. Uh, there needs to be a change in the community liaison immediately. Uh, I also want to ask, uh, if you'd be so kind, now Chair, to ask your colleagues, how many of them were under the impression that there was going to be a vote tonight when they arrived at the building?
Do you want to, I don't think that that's, we already got past already so much.
I, I, if you'd be so kind, I just want to hear from, from them whether they knew that there was going to be a vote tonight.
That's not really.
It's, it's like, Mr. Carrigan, and I think that, that it doesn't have anything to do, but I would, what I would say is this, the matter was on discussion, so eh, it was placed on the agenda. What I maybe was my mistake, my understanding, it was that we were going to vote on it in two weeks. But, um, it's not unusual that we have something on discussion and it has been voted on last thing, the resolution has been put on this, eh, as part of the process. So I just, it's just that my personal, I wasn't comfortable because I, I didn't recall that, so that's, that's why, but we all knew that it was going to be voted. Based on the discussion that it was, you know, it was part of the agenda. It's just that I'm used to seeing it, the resolution part of it, so.
So everyone except you thought that there was going to be a vote when they showed up tonight?
Well, I'm not talking about themselves, I'm just talking about me and I think that that's, I'm just talking about me. That's why I said my.
Okay, could you, could you ask your colleagues if they knew?
They don't, yes, Mr..
When did they find questions, it was already asked, did anybody have a problem with that or?
And nobody said anything before.
Right, but that's a different question. The question was, did you know when you showed up tonight that there was going to be a vote? Or did the administration tell you that you have to give a vote tonight when you arrive?
Let's move on, Mr. Carrigan, I already gave you my answer.
I would like to respond to that. I wrote a memo to council on Friday saying the matter was on agenda for, for action on Wednesday. The administration did not direct you this evening to act on it.
There was a matter.
It's nonsense.
It's just that I, I, I didn't know that it was going to be placed on the agenda. It was, again, it was my understanding that in the discussion, I thought it was discussed and they were voting on it. So it was my understanding, my misunderstanding of the matter.
Right, but I think this, uh, something was just revealed there. So the memo to you said there was going to be an action taken at this meeting, yet the agenda that was released to the public listed it as an item for discussion with no item for action, is that correct?
So, Mr. Hamilton.
I, I, I mean, reacting to the fact, understanding that it was going to be on, the, the agenda had already addressed, I did not direct that the discussion item had a separate number that you put on there. Play me, if you want to, but that's, I hope it's going to be hidden about the whole process.
Yeah, you should say.
I think that would be something, it would be an example of hiding something.
Why, Mr. Carrigan, it's not.
I want to ask in relation to, uh, are, is the council aware that there has been a large, uh, civil administrative penalty levied against the water utility by the DEP? Do you know how much it is?
It was two something, it was more five.
Three fifty-five.
Two something, yeah.
Three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And have we gotten the bill from East Brunswick for all the water we use from now? Or have we decided how much we?
I think I just, I think I disclosed at the last meeting that we paid, um, the bill, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And I would, I would also suggest that it's worth mentioning that the city has appealed the penalty, uh, decision by the DEP.
And are the council members aware that there have been three violations so far this year, uh, according to DEP?
What states are you talking about? What people, where did you get that information, Mr. Carrigan?
From the DEP Water Watch website, it's, uh, April seventeenth and then, I guess, two on, in June. I was told that it was due to a mailing error.
I don't know, I don't know what he's speaking of. There was a, there was a, I wrote.
The mailing of the notification.
I wrote you a memo about, um, um, a notice of violation that we got that was in error. We in fact submitted the, um, uh, the monthly documents in a timely fashion. On two occasions, they mishandled those and that they went back and removed the item from the, um, Water Watch, I believe, and, um, might have even apologized for having mishandled it, but.
They mean the DEP.
They being, they being the DEP. There is no other violation, um, that I am aware of and that one was, I think, improperly issued against us.
Mr. Carrigan.
Is it true that the DEP is investigating, uh, whether lead testing results were falsified from two thousand and four?
Mr. Hamilton, do you have any knowledge of that?
No, no.
Um, I'll, I'll move on from the water questions, but suffice it to say that, uh, if the process had been more transparent, if their, if the council had done the right thing and allowed more time and if you would, would have allowed people like Mr. Walsh more than five minutes instead of enforcing this ridiculous, uh, time limit, uh, that perhaps some of these things could have been fleshed out, these important issues, and we could really look at what the water utility needs instead of having to try to rush everything, uh, as, as has been the case ever since the water thing came up. And I do have to say one more thing about the water. Mr. Tarnowski got up here and he said that all this started happening six months ago.
Six, that was a.
Right, six months ago. So the, the public was not told when actually the wheel started and people kept it a secret.
That's false.
That's, um, Mr. Carrigan, that's your interpretation and I'm going to avoid you to, eh, back and forth debate here now, but what is it, um, you have, how much time do you see that?
One half.
You know, it's what happened in this.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick with these next questions, I just want an update on this, uh, I'll name a board or commission, you can tell me when the last time they had a meeting is and what the, what they're currently working on. First is the Human Relations Commission, I know you're on that board.
I'm not there anymore. Human Relations, um, do you have any, eh, notification of when these committees and boards have been meeting? They have?
Yeah, we had a meeting.
Oh, thank you, I can see you, I'm sorry.
We had a meeting in June, uh, the next meeting has not been set because of the summer activities, but there will be regular meetings from now on.
Thank you.
Was this meeting advertised to the public?
It's advertised to the public.
Uh, we notified all of the appropriate people, I do not know one way or the other whether there was a, uh, newspaper notes, I just don't know that.
Well, I'll be honest, that's disappointing, please notify me next time, uh, because I've been asking about this for.
I don't think anyone will be happy because they had a meeting. Nobody not happy because they didn't, they mentioned, they always say they don't meet, they don't meet, they don't meet, they meet and they still, eh, challenge.
Listen, these are public agencies, they're supposed to have their readings in public. Just tell, tell me. I don't, I don't understand why, why this is so difficult. And I, you had promised you were on the board, you were going to.
They need and reorganize, as I assume they did. They usually adopt a meeting schedule.
And that's when you promised.
And that is what's published to put out.
So will you make sure, Mr. Carrigan, that you get a copy somehow, we'll have it in this paper?
Thank you. Um, can you tell me when that next meeting is?
He just told you that, he just planned it, they just met in June, they're planning because the summer plan, so they will have, they will make sure that, that it will be advertised the next meeting. Yes, Mr. Hamilton?
These are the kinds of questions that I sent to Mr. Carrigan two or three meetings ago. If he had to know something just before a meeting, let us know. He then proceeded to send us about five pages, asking about five hundred different items. And I told him, I worked, that's not what we're doing. And hey, if we create himself here tonight, he could have come up to the end before the meeting, he could say.
Did he need forty-eight hours' notice before he?
So let's continue, I don't, I.
I, I have to, I have to follow up on, on that, so, uh, before the Human Relations Commission met this year, when was the last time they had a meeting?
We don't have, um, the date.
I don't have the exact date, I think it was two years, two years.
So, I'm sorry I didn't ask when the next meeting was, but I, uh, I'm asking now and I want to know and I think you should post it on the voting board like every other meeting.
They will.
Uh, Citizens Taxi Service Council, when was the last meeting and what is the status?
Volker did not get a quorum.
Right, so I think, I suggest the council look into why the, the committee's not able to get a quorum, because I heard there was a sizable portion of the public that came out to the meeting even though it was the middle of the day. Yet the people who were actually sitting on the council didn't show up. So you should look at that law and see who's on that council and either replace them or change the rules of who was on the council and add seats for the public. Because people are coming to the meetings and they're not able to have meetings. Um, I, uh, also want to ask about the Cable TV Advisory Committee, is that, has that had a meeting in years?
They haven't made, they haven't made that I know of.
When is the, the contract up with cable vision?
Years ago.
It's just not there, yeah.
Years ago. There is no contract with cable vision.
There is no contract with cable vision, they're a carryover.
Okay, so is the board ever going to meet again? Do they have any business?
Do we have, I don't have an answer to that.
Some of it we're looking into.
We're not looking into it. How much longer? I don't want to, I can't see.
One twelve.
My nation, any of this time.
Thank you. The Ethics Board is receiving my complaint, I'd like to know, when is there going to be a hearing for that complaint?
When they fix the hearing, Dr. Mulrath is only aware of it, he was going to convene a meeting, and since I came back from vacation, I will in the next day or so.
Can we just, I don't know if you want to continue asking about Mr. Carrington, about these permissions being as so forth, but maybe at the next meeting we'll have an update on what the meeting is and what the time, so that way you don't...
That would be great. I just, I need to ask, my ethics complaint is about Mr. Buka participating in an application that he should not be, and I want to know, will the application have its hearing in October, before my ethics hearing?
Why is an application provided?
To build a base.
Well, that's a planning board matter, I don't know, Mr. Hamilton, we don't, that's not really a matter that we should...
Mr. Patterson's the guy who schedules the planning board here.
Who is anticipating having its regular meeting in October.
So we just, we would just, I guess we don't have an answer, I guess, have you asked the planning board, have you been to ask about their situation?
It's not really appropriate to bring that kind of stuff, right?
So is it appropriate to bring it here?
Yes.
No, it's a planning board, right?
Okay, well, how about this, where is the planning board meeting?
Again, I'll try to get you for the next week, at least of all the means, and, Mr. Hamilton, if we have, is that out of our review, what is ethical, hearing is going to take place in the matter of the planning board?
There's a statute, it's spelled out in the law, I can't quote it, but I think it's thirty days or something of that sort, and they got to respond, not necessarily hold a hearing, but respond. And they have responded, is what they acknowledged to Mr. Carrington who received his complaint.
Okay.
In what room will the planning board meeting be held?
You should ask...
We hold this meeting.
Thank you. I would humbly suggest that whoever can influence the planning board, that it would be unwise for them to hold the hearing with this ethics complaint pending against their own attorney, unless they find a different attorney. They should not go ahead, and in fact, at the last planning board meeting, there was an issue where they decided not to go ahead with the hearing because of a pending matter, and this is exactly the same case, if not worse, they should not move ahead in October, they should reschedule that thing until after this complaint can be heard. I do just want to ask real quick about the audit, you missed it at the last meeting. There were two hundred and ninety tickets. These are court documents that have been assigned but not issued. How is this possible? It's not a possible explanation that it's multi-jurisdictional ticket books.
Since I wasn't here, you tell yourself, Mr. Carrington, I was not here, I wasn't aware of that question, I will follow up on that. Two hundred, you said some tickets, I like that.
Yes, two hundred and ninety tickets as of May 2014. Can you please ask the police representatives here, how many of them have been recalled?
Captain, do you have an answer? Do you recall, you know, I'll just, I was in a part of that question, I'm going to update with information from the...
At the last meeting, I don't, that's an empty question for the court, I explain the generality, but as far as the number, you'd have to ask the court administrator.
Tell yourself, Mr. Carrington, so we follow up on that.
He said there was a majority last time, so...
We will follow up on that, we will see, tell yourself, thank you.
Okay, I think you should really let me have more time, could you let me have some more time?
Thank you, if you spoke already, you have to find me this way first, so thank you.
I think this is disgraceful, the way that you treat the public here.
Except that you already spoke, you have to find me this way first, so thank you. At this time, I'll make the ten...
What's the hurry?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Berlatti.
I.
Council president Escobar.
Yes.